Yeah, now the. I think it's. Yeah, now the. But this is. Free design now a little bit and I don't really know. Nobody's on. About. I'm. On the. Okay. Well, for this type of. So. Everything. I'm sure as always. On the out. I'm sorry. He's giving a few days out. He had me clubbed once. It probably not right. We always have. How old? Can you hear me? All right. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. A yes, yes. Sure, well, he. Hi. Okay. Yeah. Tell you.
Good evening. We will call the January 27th, 2025 meeting of the Pacheco Stormwater District to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. First, we will take public comment. Victor has an announcement about comments.
The Pacheco Stormwater District welcomes your comments. Each individual speaker will be limited to a presentation total of three minutes. When addressing the trustees via Zoom for phone or in chambers, please state your name and county in which you reside for the record. Please address the trustees as a whole through the chair. If participating via Zoom, select the Participants tab and click the Raise Hand icon. If you're using a phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. When your turn arrives, you will hear that you have been unmuted. If you are participating in person at the chambers, please complete a speaker card identifying the item on which you wish to speak and provide your completed card to the clerk prior to consideration of the item. Speaker cards are available on the table at the entrance to the chambers. Okay, there appears to be no public comment.
Okay, if there, I will close the public comment section of the meeting and we will move on to the consent agenda. So we have the two items that we normally approve as a group. That is the acknowledgment of certificate of posting and the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion that we approve the consent agenda of the minutes and the certificate of posting.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Now we move, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Our first item is a presentation by Josh from the environmental consulting company Denise Duffy and Associates. He is with us virtually to discuss or give us a presentation regarding stream maintenance agreements. Josh, are you there?
I am. Good evening.
Good evening. So we cannot see you yet, but welcome.
Oh, thanks. I can see myself on my screen. I've got my video turned on.
There you are. Okay, now we can see you.
All right. So were you gonna put my PowerPoint up or should I share and do that myself?
Josh, this is Victor. I promoted you as a panelist, so if you'd like to share your screen, you have the capability of doing that. If not, we can click the presentation here on, in the chambers.
You're shared. Can you see it? Can you see my slide deck?
Yes.
Okay, great. So it's great to be with you guys tonight. Steve Louve asked me to give a brief presentation on California Department of Fish and Wildlife Lake and Stream Bed Alteration Program. It can be a complicated permitting effort. And well, first, I guess I'll just introduce myself a little bit. I work for Denise Duffy and Associates. We're located in Monterey. I've been there for 25 years as an environmental consultant. And I do a lot of this permitting as part of my work, so. Like I said, it can be a complicated process, and so this is just a very brief overview. Five quick slides, sort of at a 60,000-foot level. Steve suggested that folks probably hadn't been engaged with this process before, so I thought I'd start with the basic information. I'm happy to take some questions afterwards or we can just, you know, have a discussion about some specifics if you want to revisit some of the information on the slides. And with that, I will just get right into it if you'd like me to.
Yes, please do so.
So the California Department of Fish and Wildlife Lake and Stream Bed Alteration Program. Oh, my slides are not moving. There we go. Is a function of Fish and Game Code, so I'm sure you're familiar with California Department of Fish and Wildlife. They have jurisdiction within wet bodies, streams, lakes. And this is a permitting process that you can go through that allows certain activities that wouldn't otherwise be allowed, that you'd be in conflict with CDFW code if you didn't get a permit for. So the Fish and Game Code Section 1602 is the Stream Bed Alteration Agreement program. And it requires person, state, local government agency, or public utility to notify the department prior to beginning an activity that may do one or more of the following. So if you're going to divert or obstruct natural flow, change the bed, channel, or bank of a river, stream, or lake, you're going to use materials from any rank river, stream, or lake, or deposit or dispose materials into any river, stream, or lake, that would be within their jurisdiction and those activities would be regulated and you would need to notify the department. So CDFW requires a Lake and Stream Bed Alteration Agreement, LSAA, when a project activity may substantially adversely affect fish and wildlife resources. They determine whether there'll be a substantial adverse effect on a case-by-case basis after you notify them. So there is no very clear published guidelines on what activities would have an adverse effect and what don't. And so they require that you notify them if you think you might be within their jurisdiction. There's a number of different agreement types based on the activity. The two that are important to us here are probably the standard agreement and the routine of maintenance agreement, and I'll go through those. In addition to those kind, those two kinds, there are a number of other programs that would be applicable to this conversation tonight, and that's gravel, rock or sand extraction, timber harvesting, but the two that may be are general agreement or routine maintenance agreement. Most projects qualify for the standard agreement. That's typically what I work with. And the fee for that is dependent on project costs. Fees typically cost several thousand dollars to tens of thousands of dollars, depending if the project is very large, and the fee needs to be submitted with the application. Now, the standard agreement is most appropriate for if you are endeavoring in a project like building a bridge or doing some, some other activity within CDFW's jurisdiction that is a single project. There is another kind of permit that you can apply for, which is a routine maintenance agreement. And if that, and that's appropriate if you're intending to go back into the resource multiple times or on an ongoing basis to conduct activities. A routine maintenance agreement covers only multiple routine maintenance projects that the entity will complete throughout the term of the LSAA. If the LSAA describes a procedure the entity should follow to complete any maintenance projects, the LSAA covers including avoidance, mitigation, minimization measures, and reporting requirements. The permit shall acquire authorization from CDFW prior to the start of each maintenance project. So again, we're talking about a permit that's appropriate for ongoing maintenance activities. Permit shall submit a verification request form, VRF, to CDFW at least 14 days prior to beginning each maintenance project. CDFW shall determine whether the maintenance project proposed in the VRF is consistent with the LSAA. Work shall not begin until the permit has obtained written approval from CDFW for the project described in that VFR. So what that says is that when you apply for a routine maintenance permit, you go through that process of preparing the application, you get the permit. But then in addition, in addition, each time you want to go in and conduct activities that are authorized under that permit, you need to go through an additional approval process. And that's providing the specific details of the maintenance action you're proposing to engage in. And so if your maintenance activities change a bit or a lot as you move through, if you're doing it annually or more than annually, if the activity changes, going through that VRF process is like getting a new permit each time. You have to provide detailed information to them. They'll ask questions, provide more information. It's an iterative process. And each VRF permit shall include sufficient detail to describe the maintenance project, including work schedule, demonstrates that it's consistent with the LSAA. And if the VIR does not include sufficient detail, CDFW may request additional information prior to authorization. So whether you're applying for a standard agreement or a routine maintenance agreement, the process is pretty similar in that you notify the agency that you would like them to consider whether your actions require a permit in their opinion. They will submit, they will provide you typically an incomplete letter on that first submittal, and then you will go through an iterative process where they will ask for more or additional information or materials. And then you or your consultant will continue to provide the materials they're looking for until it gets approved. And that's where the time and cost comes into getting these permits, is going through that iterative process with the regulator to come to their satisfaction in terms of the details. For a routine maintenance agreement, the agreement term can be delineated in the application. You can get a maintenance agreement for one year or you can get a maintenance agreement for 30 years or 40 years. It's up to the applicant. If it's less than five years, it's about $4,500 plus an additional 376 each time you conduct an activity. If it's longer than five years, it's approximately double that for the base fee, about $9,000. And then you have to pay the same action fee every time, 376. So these, these costs are today. Next year, they'll be a little bit more. Next year, they'll be a little bit more. They always have a, an annual update for the fee structure. As with the standard agreement, the base fee needs to be submitted with the application. And then the project fee, project fees shall be submitted as specified in the agreement, which basically means each time you do the maintenance activity, they're going to expect payment of another fee before you engage in that. So the agreement process, it's typical, this is what I was saying before, it's typical for CDFW to respond to the initial application with an incomplete letter within 30 days of submittal. That's their statutory timeframe. They have to respond within 30 days. And they're typically very, very busy, and so an incomplete letter is the easiest thing for them to do on the front end, and that's what you typically get. The letter will have a list of questions and comments, and the applicant must respond to comments and revise the application accordingly, as I described, that iterative back and forth with the regulator. It's common for multiple rounds of this iterative process of comments and revisions prior to CDFW issuing the permit. Therefore, estimating a timeline for issuance of a permit is difficult. It really depends on the responsiveness of the CDFW staff. They have a lot of staff turnover, so it's not unusual to start this process and get into it for a few months, and then there'll be a new staff assigned, which will take some more time. Or when we submit materials to them, they, in response to their questions and comments, they can often take weeks, if not months, to respond. So a good case, a good scenario is receiving a permit maybe four months after applying for it. I tell my clients typically it's safe to assume a year to get one of these permits. All right, that's it for my slides. I'm happy to, I'll stop sharing here if I can figure out how to do that. And I'm happy to answer any questions or discuss any component, any component of the presentation.
Thank you, Josh. That was very informative. I have a question about the term of the permit. You mentioned that if you apply for one that's less than five years, in duration, it's about $4,500. And then greater than five years is 9,000. But so anything greater than five years is 9,000, even if it's like, if it's six years or 30, it's still 9,000?
Yes.
Okay. Um. And the, so, and you probably mentioned this, so forgive me, but is there an actual, there's an actual application form? Is that how you start? Or do you start with a letter that's saying we'd like to apply for a permit?
It's a notification, a notification form. And yeah, there is a form and there is guidance in regard to what information they're looking for, correct?
Okay. And with the understanding that they're most likely come back with an incomplete and ask you for more, and there's this iterative process, the application itself, how, how long is it?
Not extremely long. It would need to consist of a detailed project description and analysis of project impacts and reporting of what resources that they regulate will be impacted. So in regard to the time and effort the process takes, the actual initial notification is a, is a relatively small part of, of the time and cost associated with obtaining one of these permits.
Okay. Yeah, you mentioned it was really more the, the back and forth, the iterative process that really takes time.
They ask, they ask for a lot of details, and the typical scenario is that they will bring up questions that we'll need to bring back to the team if there are, you know, engineers involved in design, which in this case, I don't know much about your proposed project, but you're not building a bridge, right? So you're, you won't have engineers, but you, you would have to be responsive to them in terms of getting to some significant detail about what you're proposing to do. And they'll ask you questions about things you didn't know you needed answers to, like, you know, how many individual trees of what size are you proposing to take? If you're moving dirt, what's the cubic yardage? What's the linear extent of, of the creek run that you'll be in? And then there'll be questions about mitigation, and I didn't put a whole lot of this in the slide. It is mentioned, but they will extract mitigation in regards to compensating for impacts. So for instance, just general, if you're going to remove some vegetation, they will likely require that you mitigate somehow by improving the habitat there or potentially off-site mitigation where you'll have to do some planting maybe or some other proposed mitigation that can be costly and time consumptive to figure out exactly what the mitigation's going to look like and how you're going to implement it.
Um, once you, once you apply for this, so you have the routine, we would be doing a routine maintenance agreement. And then it would probably be pretty similar every time, I'm guessing. I'm not sure. Once we've done that, we have the permit and it's, it's good indefinitely, right? I mean, it's not like we have to tell, we get the permit and then we have to do the work within a certain amount of time.
No, you set the duration. So for instance, if you set a duration of 20 years, the permit will authorize you to do certain activities within that timeframe. But remember, each time you engage in activity, you've got to go back to them and go through this process of developing a very specific project description. And, and if the work you're proposing is very, very, very similar to the work that you described in the initial application, and if that work doesn't change over time, a routine can be a good choice. If you're expecting a little bit more flexibility, you've got, you know, a bunch of tools in the toolbox that you might use that moving forward, you might change your methodology or. Routine can be almost as onerous as just getting additional individual permits, because each time you go back to them, you've got to go, you've got to go through an authorization process for that particular action. And those can be just as costly and, and time consumptive as the original application. So if you, I guess I would just like, I would just think that you should be aware of that. It's not a panacea that you get a routine maintenance and then it's easy street from then on. It can be, you can continue to spend time and money each time you go in and, and, and do an action.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from the trustees?
Hi, Josh. My name is Paula. I have a question. I know that this is all sounds kind of new to me. But I know that Pacheco Creek has been there for quite some time. So has there been anything in the system that we've had something similar to this before?
I don't know. I don't know that, I, I was working on another project for Steve, and he asked me, since he knows I do this permitting, to come and speak to this. But so I know very little about your actual project or the, or the resource that you guys are proposing to work in. I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Armando Alfaro, and I want to ask you something. I know that, that they want to protect, you know, the wild, the fish and everything. But the situation that we have ourselves is because the creek, they don't have cleaning or maintains for the last 45 years, I believe, something like that. So my question is this. What is more important, to protect, you know, the wild or protect the properties that we own around the creek? I know we had to, I mean, maintains everything, you know, for the wild. I respect that. I love animals. But the way I think, you know, it's more important right now to clean in the creek and just to get permits and examples. If we're going to cut and create trees, we have to get a permit. If we're going to clean it, it's another permit. And it's hard for me to understand the, probably we had to get one or more than one permit to doing something in the creek. Is correct that?
Yeah, that's a good point. And if you're asking me which one do I value more? You know, doing the work that I do, I understand that there's a need and value for these kind of maintenance activities. But the question is, how does CDFW see it? And they value the, the wild, as you call it, more than the maintenance. So, you know, this is a various, uh, common scenario that I deal with with clients all the time, which is the exact situation that you're describing, that maintenance of, of needed maintenance gets deferred because the permitting over the last 20, 25 years has become so onerous in the state that it exacerbates the problem, and then you get to a situation like it sounds like you guys are in now, which is a critical situation where the maintenance is, you know, absolutely necessary to avoid harm to life and property. And most people are in the same situation you are, which is, it's a, there are crazy aspects of the system. But under an emergency, you have a lot of latitude under this program to go in and do whatever work you need to do and then notify them after the fact. And so it does seem crazy, but the way the system pushes a lot of landowners and land managers is that the permitting is so onerous that they end up waiting and doing work during an emergency situation. I'm not suggesting that you do that. I'm just letting you know what, what happens a lot commonly in this situation, because you're not the only one in this situation.
So Josh, you mentioned that the routine maintenance agreement, getting permission every time you need to go in, that can be almost as onerous as just getting a whole new permit under a standard agreement. So do you, I mean, if you were going to work with and any entity like ours, and I'm not asking you to give us advice without knowing our whole situation, but knowing that we have to go in, you know, on a regular basis. I mean, what factors would, would go into your advice about do a standard or just go with the routine maintenance agreement?
Yeah, that's a great question, and there are a lot of different factors that would weigh my decision-making on that. I would need to understand the goals and objectives of the project and understand whether those can be solved with maybe a couple of big efforts over the next 10 years or whether it really does require going in annually to meet your goals and objectives. I would, there's a lot to discuss in regard to what actions you want to take, because certain actions trigger certain permits. If, for instance, I'll talk about the two sides of the gradient. If you wanted to avoid a really onerous regulatory slog, you might develop a program where you get one CDFW permit to go in and do a major clearing, maybe move dirt, maybe not. But then after that, you would plan only to go in and maintain vegetation. you would plan only to go in and maintain vegetation and not turn soil so that you wouldn't trigger additional permits. Versus, you know, if you wanted to go out and remove sediment every year or every other year, you know, a routine maintenance might be the appropriate vehicle there since you know you're going to go in and do a big project annually or every two years or every three years, you know? And I will mention that this is an extremely highly regulated resource, right? Creeks. So there's a bunch of other permits that would be triggered and they intersect with each other. So it matters what your goals are to strategically plan how to have the least amount of pain to get towards meeting those. And it is complicated. It's a strategic process, planning process.
It sounds like that's a big part of your job, what you do.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but there's one other important component that I did mention in the materials I provided, but it should be highlighted because folks may not think about this as much. But when you get a permit, like I said, you're going to need to do mitigation. And that mitigation, they will require that that mitigation is monitored and reported on for at least five years. So it's not just the permit and then the cost of the action. It's the cost of the mitigation and then the monitoring and the reporting. So that plays into, you know, whether you want to get a routine or not. It's probably, just generally speaking, more cost effective to do one large project and then try to structure it so that you could do non-permitted maintenance of that project down the line. Versus under a routine, you're going to keep incurring the mitigation and the monitoring and the reporting. So, you know, a big portion of your budget will just go towards facilitating the permitting, reporting, monitoring and reporting, rather than the actual action itself.
Thank you. That's really good information. I will open it up now for a public comment.
There appears to be no public comment. For Cheryl Beerly, you may now approach the podium.
Regarding the CDFW guidelines or programs, we would be applying for offered programs through the CDFW? Or do we come up with our own program? That's my first question. Because I do know they have a sediment removal program. And Josh, do you know anything about that?
I don't. I haven't been involved with that.
Okay. Mitigation, I just wanted to add mitigation, I think, that could be easily handled for us because there is certain organizations that offer grants for plantings and so forth. So I don't think that's a big problem to be able to meet. And five-year, you know, updates, I think is easy to do also because I'm doing that for my own property. I wanted to ask Josh, as my personal feeling, I don't speak for the board, but if we do want to go forth with an application on doing a project, do, is there a chance that we could work under, let's say, for example, Valley Water District? Just a thought, if they're doing projects up above at the dam, the proposed dam area, do they have any routine maintenance agreements currently in our stream area or in our county that we could fall under?
I don't have any information that could speak to that.
Okay. And then my last question was, is does CDFW perform inspections on these projects that are performed by us, for example? Do they come out and inspect the job site?
In each permit, they have conditions that guarantee them the right and ability to access the project at any time. It's very rare that they do that.
Okay, so they don't come out and check before, during and after?
They have the right to do that, but they very rarely do that.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Okay, we do not have any additional public comment.
Okay, well Josh, I want to thank you so much for that. That was very informative. You gave me a headache, but that's okay. I'm better informed now. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. It was good to speak with you tonight.
Okay, we will move on now to 5.2, which is our regular update regarding debris removal and levee repair.
Great, okay, thank you. Trustees Steve Loop, Public Works Administrator. And we'll be providing an update first on item 5.2. So debris removal and levee repair. So first on the debris removal that has been finished, we are moving forward with payment from FEMA. And we have one burn pile to remain in that regard. And it's at the northeast corner of the project. And that is remaining to be burned. We actually have a permit to do that work. But I think we should talk about some funding issues a little bit later in the slides and the items before we move forward with the burning of that pile. But debris has obviously been removed from the creek. For those of you that are not up to date, that's happened a while ago. And we just have one pile of debris to be burnt. On the levee repair, did make some progress courtesy of FEMA over the holidays. The FEMA's environmental team sent the district a notice of their environmental determination. And basically, the good news is, they determined that the work for the levee repair is not going to affect the ordinary high watermark, which is the jurisdiction of US waters of the US. Because it, basically, they're saying our work is above the waterline, which is great with that waterline. So that means we can actually proceed with the levee repairs. And so I'll leave it at that because there's some costs we'll talk about a little bit later in the agenda. But that was a big hurdle and so that's good news regarding the levee repairs. So I'll pause there for questions or comments.
So that is indeed good news because that means we don't need the extra stuff that the water board was making us go through.
Correct.
So at this point, at least for that final levee repair that's going to be reimbursed by FEMA, is there anything standing in the way at this point from finishing that?
From a permitting standpoint, no. We'll talk about the cost a little bit later.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so that was a big hurdle in that regard.
Okay. So the costs are, you were talking about item 5.4, right?
Correct, yeah. I just want to kind of refresh where we're at from a cost standpoint. And the good news is there's funding available to do the things we need to do. We have not costed the burn pile at the northeast corner of the project that remains. So, but we can go through some of the other costs when we go through item 5.4.
Okay, all right then. Are there any questions from the trustees?
Any idea for when the other debris piles can be burnt?
Well, again, if we could convince the property owner, I guess, to burn it for free, that would be great and a good thing. And so we'll probably be reaching out to them pretty soon to do that. And right now, the way that the pile's set, we're going to need Cal Fire or Hollister Fire to be there because there's trees pretty nearby. And so they might, I don't know, I don't want to speak for the fire departments, but they might require more of the orchard trees to be cleared. The good news is the orchards trees are all, according to the property owner, not functioning or operational. So we would just have to get a contractor or the property owner, I'm guessing, and not speaking for the fire department, to clear a little bit more trees in the area. Because we did kind of minimal clearing when we put the pile. We did clear a few trees per the permission of the property owner. But again, we'll talk about in a moment, but I think the cost needs to be considered, which may be zero, maybe not zero. So if that kind of answers your question. Okay, you bet.
All right, is there any public comment?
There appears to be no public comment.
All right, so we'll move on to 5.3. And this is an update on the status of the FEMA applications.
Yeah, so another little bit of good news. FEMA's teams were working on both projects over the holidays. And we noted that because they have what they call an action log. And they're pretty detailed about what's occurred when they have made an action. And so there's actually a few things. The most recent one was as of January 16th. So just a few weeks ago. There, for the debris removal, they are now into what they call a spend plan projection. And they look at the costs that we've submitted. And they say the projection of the costs are realistic. So then it goes to, for the debris removal, it's going to go to a next step is called spend plan projection authorization, I think is the next step. It's, so we're within a couple of steps of the reimbursement possibly occurring, I'll say. So that's good news on the debris removal. And then literally as of today, I think it was at 3:30, on their log, I checked just before we left. But as of today, a similar thing happened with the levee repairs, where they also went through that same process. And their note, it sounded like they were into the second phase that I just mentioned. So the levee repairs, it sounds like it's a little bit ahead even of the debris removal still. They're about at the same point where they're both getting to the final authorization of costs for both the debris removal and the levee repairs. And just to remind folks, FEMA, for the debris removal, it's possible they'll authorize 100%, but probably not because it didn't occur while the emergency was happening. So it's likely FEMA would reimburse 75%. And then the state, ideally, and what we request is the state reimburses the 25% of the remaining costs, or, excuse me, 75% of the remaining costs. Long story short, there'll still be 6% of costs left over, which the county is already aware of, that that might never be able to be repaid. So just FYI. Yeah, and that's for both the debris removal and the levee repairs. There still might be 6% kind of remaining that would not get paid off by the trustee, the district to the county. So, but good news, both those items are making movement through FEMA's team. So I'll pause there for questions.
Thank you, Steve. That is good news. Are there any questions from the trustees?
I don't have questions, but I want to be a thorn on everybody's side. It's been two years since the flood, two years and a week.
Yep.
Yes. County has a project that FEMA's team still hasn't even looked at our project after two years, on a different project. So yes, understood.
Yeah. All right.
And in FEMA's defense, I'll say, especially their environmental team, they have a small team that covers a ginormous area of California. And so, and there's been all kinds of disasters and things going on over the past couple of years. So I just want to put that out there that FEMA's staff, like the rest of us, are extremely short-staffed. So, but yes, noted, I'll say.
Any public comment?
There appears to be no public comment.
All right, then we will move on to 5.4. And this is, we're going to discuss and vote on an increased expenditure for the repair of the levee on Lover's Lane. And this was the additional project that was not going to be reimbursed by FEMA. So, Steve?
Correct. So of the 1.6 million original loan that was provided by the county to the district, as of today, as we sit here today, for, if you subtract all the approved scope of work that's contracted and approved to occur, there will still be $208,000 remaining in that loan. So that's where we are today as we all sit and stand here. Now, the county received a change order from the contractor that's doing the levee repairs in the order of $59,000. And what that entails is re-mobilizing due to the delays. When, and that's one cost. Part of the other cost of this $59,000 is when we, we, the county, met with FEMA, we did some measurements and some takeoffs of that stretch of the main washout, I'll say. And we measured 221 feet for that area to be repaired. Well, the actual cost is, or the actual length, I should say, is more in the order of 250 to 260 feet. And so in that change order, there's an amount to, for the extra work regarding the levee and work, riprap and things for that to occur. Additionally, there's this smaller, I'll call it location, I get my locations back. There's a smaller washout area right next to the larger washout. And so we need to finish that piece as well. And so, long story short, and I've still been reviewing it with another person because we just received this a few days ago. We'll send that to the trustees to look at, but that change order is $59,000. So if you, if you subtract that from the 208, the remaining funds on the 1.6 million would be 149,000 remaining total of the fund. And per the trustees' direction, we went out with, met with the geotechnical engineer, the property owners, and a contractor. And we went to Lover's Lane, 7892, at the southwest corner where there's some embankment erosion. And all of us together took measurements, came up with a strategy to add essentially 300 cubic yards of rock in that area, which should help quite a bit. And the first step of that process is actually to remove a little bit of debris, vegetation, I should say, from the bank. Once the vegetation's removed, you place the rock. And that whole effort, we received a price from a contractor of $108,000. And the volumes look correct. So we showed that to another contractor and they said, yep, all the volumes look good. The numbers of man-hours, equipment, rock, look correct. But that other contractor suggested we should go back to the original contractor and ask them to make sure they've included things like social security and some other kind of prevailing wage type of items. Because whatever the district does, you're going to have to use, you're going to have to do it with prevailing wages because you're a district, a special district. If you were an individual property owner, it'd be different, but... If you were an individual property owner, it'd be different, but you're actually, you know, a public district, and so therefore you have to use prevailing wages. So, long story short, we sent an email to the contractor last week and said, please double-check your numbers. They sent us an email today, sometime after lunch, and said, we're going to retract our offer of, or our proposal for 108,000 and double-check our numbers, basically because those numbers might increase. So unfortunately, as of today, we don't have an official offer, but the original one was $108,000. And so that contractor is going to go back, make sure they have all the prevailing wage costs incorporated. And then they're going to try to send us a new proposal this week, ideally, which we'll then forward, because we've already checked everything else on it, we'll forward it to the trustees to look it over. But we don't have, as we stand today, an official contract proposal from the contractor because they retracted their original quote of $108,000. So, don't know what the number is. Sounds like potentially it could go up from there. And again, a remaining total is 149,000. Hopefully, their new proposal does not go over 149,000. But either way, we'll have to send that new proposal to the three trustees to look at. And then it sounds like we're going to have to, you know, there's nothing to approve at this moment, unfortunately. I guess you could discuss what the ultimate amount you want to potentially approve, but we don't have an actually official proposal courtesy of the contractor's emails today. So that's where we stand. So I'll pause with questions.
So I'd like to hear just a little bit more about that change order, the 59,000. Presumably, that would be reimbursed by FEMA, right?
Correct.
Because it's part of the original work that we were going to do.
Correct. And just for full disclosure, because the original contract is so far in the process, and I believe the original contract, we were requesting approximately $350,000 from FEMA. That is actually about the original contract amount. I think it was 340 of the original contract amount for the levee repairs. Is that right? Yeah. So, but for this new proposal, it's not in the system. So potentially, yes, for the 59,000, we'll request it, but it'll have to go back into FEMA's system, and I don't know where that goes. Because what they're doing is, they're looking at the scope that was, the project scope that was talked about, agreed on, et cetera, et cetera, over the past two years. And so they're, that's what they've been reviewing. So I'll leave it at that. But does that answer your question?
So what, so the 59,000, you said it was something, some, part of it had to do with re-mobilizing because of the delays?
Correct.
And then part of it has to do with, it's actually going to be a bigger area than we originally thought, or?
The length was longer than the 220, 220 feet that we measured with FEMA, because I guess when you get down into the creek, which we didn't go far enough, because there's just things going on in the creek that, I don't know. We could have gone farther into the creek, but we measured from the top of bank. And so by the time you get down to the bottom of the bank, it's slightly longer area, essentially. So that's the reason, primary reason for the change order.
Okay. And then, so we'll have 149,000 left.
Correct.
And of course, we've identified the work at 7892 Lover's Lane as being a priority, although it's entirely possible now that that project could swallow up the entire 149,000 that we had to work with.
It's possible to get very close to that amount. That's correct.
Okay. Have you identified any other areas that, that need attention as?
There's multiple smaller, less, I'll say slightly less urgent areas than the one at 7892. I haven't found an area that has that much erosion. And again, you know, I've looked over the creek. Well, after the storms, when it was dry, I walked a good portion of the creek. So to answer your question, that's the primary area of concern, in my opinion, that we need to address now. As Josh mentioned, we all need to discuss on what other areas and scope and things are needed if we're going to do more maintenance and, but yeah, I won't go into that. But that's the primary of concern, for sure.
Are there questions from the trustees?
I just want to make a comment. CIE, I had the idea, when you make a deal with a company and they give you the price, and like you said, you made, you, when you guys check it, it's 222 feet, something like that, and then find out another 20 feet, you know, they never added the other 20 feet in the, in the first price, or, or yes?
Primarily, the extra costs for that is adding the rock in that area. And there's a little bit of work, you know, with the machines that put the rock in that area and things. So, no, it didn't come up until recently. You know, it came up after, after we did the original scope a year ago, I guess you'd say.
Yeah, because my point is, when you make a contract and they check the two areas and they give you a price, no matter if one year they pass or two years pass, they're supposed to respect the contract or the price they give you the first time. You know, but it is not added, the second section, yes, is, is something different.
Noted and understood. And if we didn't even do that extra cost, there would still be a minor cost just to have the equipment brought onto the site because we had to remove it from the site for the delay that was kind of, for the permitting delay. So there'll still be some minor costs even just to come and finish the project. You know, I don't know the exact amount, maybe it's half of the 59,000, but just to come back on the site, finish the last piece of the repair and that other smaller repair. So, yes. So we could say, this is your scope for the 220 feet and whatnot, but just to come and finish, it'll still be some amount of that. It'll be less amount, but to just finish the, the top portion of the repairs. But again, there's still that 20 feet, I don't know. There's, there would still be some cost. It won't be as much as the 59,000, but just to, to finish the re-mobilization and come back on the site, there'll be, there'll still be some cost involved, so. Okay.
Okay. How about public comment?
There appears to be no public comment.
Okay, well, we don't have, we don't have a proposal to approve or not. I guess the only thing we could do is vote on whether we would be willing to spend up to $149,000 on the 7892 Lover's Lane repair. If we did that, and then the bid came in under that amount, then the work could proceed without any further approval from the board?
Yes, because I'd recommend, if that's the case, the motion would be, you know, to spend $149,000 or less for that repair and to authorize, you know, Michelle Schrader, trustee, to sign the contract in that regard, or something to that effect, so that we could send the contract to you of, whatever the amount's going to be, less than 149,000, and trustee Schrader could sign the contract.
Yeah, I mean, that's how the original motion was, was made and approved.
Correct.
We had approved up to $50,000, I think, for this particular repair. So I guess the question is, do we want to go ahead and just say, okay, we'll, we'll spend whatever we have to up to the 149,000 that we have, have left? Or do we want to wait and see what the actual revised proposal is? Okay, then it will be on the next agenda, and hope, by that time, we should have... Okay, Lucinda, I asked for public comment, and you didn't. Okay, that's, that's your input. If you'd like to go up to the podium, I will reopen the public comment.
Hello, my name is Lucinda Ford. I live in San Bernardino County, near Lover's Lane. And the subject matter is the repair of the levee, which is close to my house, is extremely close. It's within, you know, from here to that wall, you know? And so if there is a flood or more rain, and I'm afraid that the breach will occur, and if this delay keeps going on, you know, it could be a life of, you know, people's lives, animal life, my house, houses nearby. So if you're going to delay this for another month, you know, the work is going to be, not going to happen immediately. So it's, it's just not logical and does not make sense. It's already been delayed enough. And what, what would the purpose be if it does go above? There's, you know, are you going to not approve it? It just, there's no logic sense. So I think the, the, I recommend that it should be done, and it should be allowed to go up to the amount that you have available. Because are you going to not deny not ever doing it if it goes, you know, what, 10, 75%? What is it acceptable? So that's my, my comment on this.
And on that note, if I may, just make comment. So because of the rains we've had, and when we were even at the site, say, a few weeks ago, or a month ago, and because of the rains that come up in the next couple of days, it's after those rains occur, we're, and even today, and even before today, we had to wait for the site to, we have to wait for the site to dry out. The contractor, if they bring their very large, heavy equipment to the site now, even, in my opinion, the levee repair site for the original levee repair down near upstream, near San Felipe, I think, in my humble opinion, the contractor's going to say, and they've already said, really, we need to wait till the soil gets more firm, otherwise our equipment's going to not be operable in those areas. So as part of your decision-making process, in my opinion, because of the current rains and the fact that we're already going to have to wait till, I don't know, several weeks for the sites to dry, I don't think that we'd even be able to get equipment there before the February meeting of this board. In other words, next three or four weeks, we won't be able to mobilize pretty much in either location, in my opinion, as an engineer, with some of the size of the excavators and their, the weight of the equipment. So it's not like we can repair things today, or tomorrow, or next week, especially with the rains coming this weekend. There's not supposed to be heavy rains, but any rains, unfortunately, even a little bit of rain Friday night or Saturday, it's supposed to be a pretty small storm, but it's just going to take a longer time for the, the site to dry out. So just for your consideration, so.
We've had a pretty dry year so far. I know that's supposed to change in February, but, you know, I don't know how likely it is that we'll have actual flooding. I guess you never know, you can never really tell. The, the rains that we get, I mean, is there serious erosion every time we get a little rainstorm, or does it, it's really only the big stuff that, that makes it worse?
Correct, yeah. You know, I mean, believe it or not, every time, I've been to the creek multiple times, it's barely flowing now, so I don't know if there's any serious erosion occurring. If we had a big storm, it'd be a different story, and I don't know of any big storms forecasted that I know of at this point. So that's the state today.
I, I looked at the level of the creek online for the gauge, right, up by Casa de Fruta, and I think the creek there is still at like one and a half feet. I know that the National Weather Service is forecasting rain in February at or slightly above normal. But it's been so dry already that it would take a while to get up to the, the level where we're actually have to worry about flood, flooding, I think, probably, I don't know. Have to have like one atmospheric river after another. On the other hand, you know, the point is, well, I mean, are we going to spend this money anyway? I mean, I guess the, the point is, in order to get this done, you've, Steve, you've said that this is the, the most urgent area. This is sort of the priority area.
Correct.
If it comes in at 149,000, are we going to say, you know, is there anything that we can do for less than that? If we, if we, can we shrink the, the scope of the project? Would that even make any sense? Would it, would it have any impact?
No, I'd, you know, if this, we were talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars one way or another, the answer would be yes. But the answer, this, the quantities we need are the correct quantities, and maybe they come in at 130,000. I don't know the final number, none of us do, but I think if we're going to spend up to this amount, then I'd recommend we just, I would recommend we move forward with giving trustee Schrader the authorization to use up to the 149,000 because it's needed. A bunch of people have checked the quantities of rock needed, it'll help quite a bit. And so, does that answer your question?
I, I think so, yeah. I mean, we originally authorized up to 50,000, but, and, and if we only had to spend 50,000, then we might actually have still a good chunk of money left to do something somewhere else, right?
Correct.
But if we can't get anything done for 50,000, and we know it's going to be at least 100,000, and probably more, then whatever we have left, I mean, we don't get to just bank it, we either have to give it back, or we spend it on something urgent, because that's what the board of supervisors said, right? We either give it back, or we spend it on something very urgent, some urgent repair. So, I mean, let's say, let's say it comes back at, I don't know, 125,000. Then that leaves us, what, $24,000? Can we do anything with that?
Not much at all. So I think you have a week of Army Corps, we'll talk about in a sec, or California Conservation Corps. But again, that's not urgent. So to do anything urgent for that amount, the answer's basically no.
Right. So, so we either, if we commit to this project, we either spend what it takes to get it done up to what we have, or we just give it back, right? I mean...
Correct.
Do you think, I mean, is that an accurate assessment of the situation?
Yes, that is accurate.
And you've already, you've assured us that there are no other areas that are as urgent as this area?
That I have seen visually, that is also correct. There are none. This is the most urgent area that I've seen visually, so.
Okay. Well, I don't, you know, I, I could go... Okay. Well, I don't, you know, I I could go either way. I mean, I don't think anything really bad is going to happen if we wait. On the other hand, I'm not sure it'll be different if we wait. But I'm, I'm, I can go either way on this.
Let me make a comment. I agree with you. We're supposed to fix it, you know? And we're supposed to fix it last year. You know, the problem, like Steve explained, right now it's raining season. All the material is wet. When they bring the material, uh, whatever kind of material to pack, uh, they're not gonna have the compact they need it. So it's gonna be hard to do it in the next few weeks, I believe, because of rain. You know, so we had.
Okay, okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you right there, Lucinda, because, okay, look, I already opened the public comment for you once. Okay. Oh, okay, then please go to the podium and 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 let's, let's start the timer at three minutes, okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much for letting me speak again. In response to Armando's statement in regards to the possibility that there be more rains and therefore no opportunity to work on the, in the locations. You know, that has been a problem for the past two and a half years or two years. Because every time an opportunity to actually go in and do work, we don't have enough or permission or authorization to do the work, right? So what I'm saying, if you keep delaying it and delaying it, then, and we don't have an authorization when there's a window available, then we can't use that window. So that's why I'm against, um, uh, negating this work to be done. So even if you go up to maybe 108,000 or even 130,000 or 125,000, the amount left over would not be able to fix anything almost anyway. So to me, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to not agree upon that it should be authorized if it's acceptable, you know, to whatever amount it is. Because the amount is not, it's only 159,000. It's already at 108. And the reason why it's going up, because they need to do a prevailing wages, reevaluation of that. So we don't have control of that. They don't have control of that. So why deny the approval up to that 159, 49? Does not make sense to delay it, because if an opportunity opens up, Steve and his, uh, the person, the contractor, can go in and do the work. Which would be better, because if a storm did come about, and even if the, uh, you know, we can't predict when the storm is going to come in. So we can't really rely on that, well, it's gonna rain, it's not gonna rain, we can't go in. We don't know that. We're just speculating. So I think an option is to take care of it now, and that way, um, Michelle has an authorization to sign off on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I do want to sort of review the history here, because I, I, I I want to correct the impression that this board has just not done anything for two years. This area was not under the original FEMA authorization. I had to go to the Board of Supervisors and beg for extra money to to use the leftover to be able to even consider doing this project. So, and it's not, um, I mean, we're trying to be careful here, right? We have very little resources. And we're now essentially talking about using everything we have left on one area of the creek. Now, it seems like that probably makes the most sense. But, um, you know, we're just trying to be careful here, and I just want to remind everybody of that. That said, um, is there a motion to go ahead and approve an amount up to, well, shall I even say 149,000? I mean, what if we, that other, there's not going to be another change order, is there, on that other project?
No, not that I'm aware of. So, um.
Because that's our first priority. We have to, we have to finish that project, because that's the one that is going to be reimbursed by FEMA.
And I'm pretty confident that the most the other change order would cost after we review it is that amount. So you'll, the district should still have the 149,000 remaining.
Okay. So is there a motion? I mean, it, we can go either way. We can, we don't have to vote on this tonight. But we could, if someone would like to make a motion, um, we could vote on just, again, we're not actually, well, I mean, we'd still have to review the work and and make sure that the proposal is well thought out, right? But what we would be voting on now is that, provided that we have a good proposal, that we could spend up to 149,000. That is right. We are not going to have any more money. So we have to find, and the board is not gonna, the Board of Supervisors is not going to give us anymore. So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to find more money. But again, it's not like we can just put that money in the bank. We would either have to spend it on something urgent or give it back.
I have a comment. Is there no way we can ask him for FEMA for emergency? Because it's an emergency. Asking for a little more money to fix that problem?
If there, so the way that FEMA works, you have to have a declared emergency. And right now, there is no declared emergency so that we could ask for the money to be reimbursed. So this FEMA would not reimburse this amount, because we have to tie, we'd have to tie the erosion that occurred, as trustee Schrader said, somewhat more recently, to some emergency event. And I don't think we can make that, there are any, there's nothing to tie it to, essentially. So, um, so FEMA would not reimburse this cost.
It is a gamble, yes. Even if it doesn't rain anymore, we're looking at a minimum of a few weeks. Right? Um, for it to need to dry out. And it actually is supposed to rain a little bit. So probably the work won't be done until March or April. But, um, but we don't know. So but then the other, the other question is, if we didn't spend as much as, if we didn't spend as much as we needed to do this, what would we do with the money?
There'll be other areas along the creek that we have to look at. I mean, it would have to all go into the creek, no matter what.
And it would have to be something urgent. It couldn't be like routine maintenance or something preventative. It would have to be something urgent. And Steve, you said you'd identified a couple of other areas, but, um, but we don't have any proposals for those areas, right?
Correct. And really, to do, you know, much else, because for this, we're basically repairing 150 feet of a bank, embankment that's, has some severe erosion. You know, the district's jurisdiction is 1.8 miles upstream. You know, there's little pockets of things. There's, there's all kinds of repairs that could occur. But, but again, you know, this is the most urgent spot. So let's just say, in a perfect world, they say, okay, the contractor comes back and says it's 108 exactly. You know, even for another 40,000 remaining, it's gonna be difficult to do much of any other urgent repairs. Because if, if you think about it, if 150 feet is 108 and we have 40,000 remaining, then you're talking a really small section, you know, of creek, maybe, I don't know, let's see, 30, 40 feet, I don't know, I have to run the numbers, but, and get that identified. And just to mobilize, as we've already talked about, just to get contractors out there, that's, you know, 15, 20,000 sometimes, depending on what the work is. So it would be really difficult to use that 40,000 on any other urgent spots if there was something urgent to do. But again, this is the most critical area, like we've talked about.
Yeah, well, upstream is where all the levy repairs have been so far, not only in 2023, but 2017 as well, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, there's been nothing in the other, because I live downstream, so I know that. And this particular area is close to the road, right?
Correct.
So, um, while of course we're concerned about individual property owners, we also have to be, we have, we have to be concerned with the impact on the neighborhood as a whole. So if this area went, what would be the impact on Lover's Lane generally?
Well, yeah, if it breached, there's several properties in that general area that would be affected, not just this one property, but, you know, several properties, I don't know, hundreds of acres, I guess. I haven't, it's hard to determine, right?
Yeah.
If there's a breach, but.
Not to mention the road itself.
If it, if the breach came back, yeah, yeah. And the road's kind of secondary, but there's definitely a lot of properties and other residences and people that would be affected by the breach downstream and in this area.
So it's not just one property owner?
Correct.
That we would be spending $149,000 for?
Correct, yeah. It's several property owners, several, lot of acreage, lot of area. Would be better protected by utilizing the 149 or less that we have remaining. It's a good point.
And, um, I don't know how far you've been further downstream. I've said this before, on our, I mean, we have a great deal of the levy on our property. But it seems like it always, the levy on the far side from where our house is, is lower. That's what I was always told. And so it always floods in that back field back there where there's really not much going on. So I, I mean, I don't know if there's any, I mean, it's, it's an area that we need to pay attention to. I mean, I, I'd like it looked at, but I don't know if it has the same impact. Have you been in that area?
I have been, um, on, down the opposite, so the northwest quadrant, there's a property over there with a long road, and maybe that's part of your property as well, or even the Florix property. So I've been down
Yeah.
to that whole area, to answer your question. I've been there. I don't know if that answers your question.
All right. Well, I don't normally make the motions, but I'll just go ahead and do it and see if anybody wants to second it. Um, I move that we or that we, that we authorize, um, up to $149,000 to, uh, do these repairs of the levy at 7892. And that we authorize the president of the Board of Trustees to sign a contract for that work of up to $149,000. Is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. So the motion carries.
Thank you.
Let's move on. 5.5. Um, and I'm not sure that how much, there's nothing to vote on here. We were going to discuss the U.S. Army Corps National Levy Safety Program. So, um, we've talked about the Army Corps, uh, the last few meetings. And this is my understanding that, um, back in, I think it was October, Paula and also Rochelle, um, attended that, um, levy owners meeting and first got to meet some people from the U.S. Army Corps. And then subsequently, in December, we had Jessica Ludi from the Army Corps do a presentation. And, um, I've traded a couple of messages with Jessica in the past week, trying to set up additional meetings with her. In the meantime, Rochelle has been communicating with someone else at the U.S. Army Corps from the National Levy Safety Program. And anyway, Rochelle, do you want to come up and and just tell us briefly what, what you've been, you've been communicating with someone named Rick Lauk, maybe Loak or Lauk?
Yeah, I'm a bit foggy too, because it's been a while. But, um, where we left it was that he suggested that our district submit a letter of intent to participate in the, uh, levy safety program. As of our last correspondence, they were kind of in the, in limbo because they hadn't yet received their 2025 budget. But I recommended to you, I think in an email, that we move forward and, um, comprise that letter.
Yeah, there was, um, yeah, the letter, some kind of letter of intent or or something. So then I was thoroughly confused, because I didn't know, you know, we had Jessica, and then we have Rick, and we have, and I, so I wrote a, an email to Jessica Ludi, and I actually told her that you had been communicating with Rick. And told her, and she's like, oh, that's great. I know Rick. I used to work at the National Levy Safety Program. And so I said, okay, that's great, but how is that different from what you would do? Because her title is Flood Risk Manager. So I told her, I'm confused. I don't know what the difference between your two programs is. And so finally, just yesterday, she sent a message and said, okay, don't worry. Rick and I will communicate and we'll present some things to you, and then you can decide what to do.
Correct. I think, I think it doesn't matter who we work with, or I think there's all different areas, from the Silver Jackets to the PL 8922 group, to the levy group, to all the other groups. So in essence, they seem to be pretty well organized and communicate with, uh, with each other. And it seems that our, you know, best interest is at mine, no matter who we're working with. So I like the feel of working with them. But I recommend that we consider moving forward on that letter of intent. That would, if I understand, get us started for this whole levy observation thing. So then when we're asking, you know, what other areas of vulnerability do we have, uh, we'll have, I think, an official evaluation of it.
Yeah.
And in order to get that official evaluation of it, I believe our levy needs to be presentable and walkable. Uh, I tried to do it today, pretty hard and scary, because now we have the new arrival of, of bore on our area, which we've never had before. So I don't know what's waiting in the bushes, but can't even see, you know, so the point is, you know, it's step by step. We start with this letter. Then we work perhaps with the California Conservation Corps to remove the brush to get a good analysis. Then they come out, they will walk the levy, give us their expertise, uh, opinion. come out, they will walk the levee, give us their expertise, opinion, and we go from there. But I think it's a good step forward that we need to take. What that letter looks like, I think he said he'll work with us on that, and I can arrange a meeting with whoever you would like.
Yeah, well, so he and Jessica now are going to communicate. That's my understanding.
Okay.
And then maybe, maybe we can all have a meeting.
Okay.
And just decide what the next step is.
Sounds good.
But yeah, I mean, so far of all the things that we've investigated, the U.S. Army Corps has been the most promising in terms of
Yes.
Who's actually going to help us.
Yes. And it sounds like they're going to get a budget coming up pretty soon. So I think it's good potential. And a couple of things, again, are the the levee safety program, I think we should pursue with that letter, and the application for the PL 89 thing, which is that instant funding when an emergency hits.
Yeah, I have a little information sheet here, Public Law 8499 fact sheet. And it looks like it says, emergency assistance under PL 8499 during flood events will be of a temporary nature to meet immediate threat. So I'm not sure. Yeah, anyway, let's just have them explain it to us.
Yeah, from from that thing that we attended, Paula, did you pick up on the PL?
I did, and it's
We have to apply.
Yeah.
Yes. So we just have to get ourselves organized. Let's start with that letter for the levee evaluation program. And simultaneously, we work on our PL application, and that has to be presented with the O and M manual?
Right. And that's, okay, and yeah, we need to talk about that.
Right.
I feel like we need an O and M manual working group.
I agree.
Or something.
I, yes, I agree. I have no idea how to attack that.
Okay. Well, and maybe, and you know, I don't know, maybe our friends at the Army Corps can be of some assistance with that, too.
Perhaps.
All right.
I have asked for, I have asked for samples. I haven't received any. I've tried to ask if they're official, are they unofficial? Is it just a matter of a white binder with all the history of our levee projects that have occurred? And I don't get any really clear answer on that. So we should work with Jessica on that, perhaps.
Yeah. All right. Well, it sounds like the next thing that really needs to happen is some kind of a Zoom meeting with all of us.
Okay.
So I will work on that.
Sounds good. And I'm available if you need help.
Absolutely. Thank you. Do the trustees have any questions?
There appears to be no public comment.
Okay, let's move on to 5.6. And this is an item that we've been carrying over now. Discuss and approve levee cleanup by the California Conservation Corps. As you'll recall, several months ago, we got information about how much it would cost to have the California Conservation Crew bring a crew out, I'm sorry, California Conservation Corps bring a crew out for one week or two weeks. They would just be, my understanding is, they would just be removing debris and like dead matter, not actually taking out anything living that we would need a permit for. And the last thing that we discussed was possibly trying to get some drone footage so that we could further sort of decide where precisely we would want to employ the CCC. So Steve, is there any update on that?
Yeah, a small update. So I received an email from Cal Fire. Just, they were confirming that, or asking for confirmation that the district had easements over this area of the creek. And so I sent them the easement area. And so before the holidays, they said, okay, you're in the queue again, and we'll let you know when we have the drone footage ready. And I checked emails from that person and then two people at Cal Fire, so we haven't received it yet, the drone footage, or I haven't received it because I tend to miss emails. But we haven't received it yet. And so I'll reach out to them again this week. And it sounds like we were getting up in the queue. They have, it sounds like they have multiple requests going on, but that they were, again, before the holidays, they were, they were thinking about the project at least. So we haven't received the drone footage yet. And then to refresh, folks, it's probably you're seeing up here, or maybe this is a discussion for next meeting, but it was going to be approximately 13K a week. As we've already discussed, this kind of cost was not really authorized by the Board of Supervisors because it's more of just a maintenance. So I don't know the remaining funds of the districts to date, but it would have to come from the district fund source to do the Conservation Corps cleanup, not from the 1.6 million dollar loan, just for clarification. So just FYI.
Okay. Well, and at this point, now we're in the winter again, so we're probably looking at like summertime for this anyway, at this point, right? I mean, we need, we need to dry up a little bit, or I don't, maybe not. I don't know.
You know, it's a great point. Even if we get a real small storm, or even no storm on Friday, it's supposed to be pretty small, but they'll want to really make it worthwhile, they'll want access, you know, as much as the district wants into the creek. Now, maybe that's just along the levees, maybe it's just along one side of the levee. But I think until you have the drone footage, it's going to be hard to determine where you might want to prioritize using any district funding. So until we get the drone footage, it's going to be difficult for that determination to be made. Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the trustees?
No.
Yeah, I mean, my own feeling is, at this point, we might as well wait and see the drone footage and then, you know, make a determination about whether we want to do this or not.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Is there any public comment?
Yes, we have Rochelle, barely.
I just wanted to give my input on the California Conservation Corps. I was trying to get through there today, the levee, based on the previous cleanout, because a year ago, we walked, I took you over the rocks and walked down and up and no problem, but I can't even see that path today. So I'm wondering, could we propose to get the director of the CCC out there on the levee spot and have him say, yeah, no problem. I can, we can totally clear this in one week, get it back to where it was before. And in terms of the timing, I mean, I kind of think that now is the time to clear, but I may be way off. But I see all the dead brush from last summer still standing, which is totally impeding all that area that we, which is that stuff that we, you know, cleared out. So every year, we're going to have this same level of regrowth. And I think it's really a good idea to get them out there to see, is this going to be a tool or a group that we can use every year to do, you know, levee cleanout, or brush cleanout on the levee so that we can access it and, you know, have it be an easy thing to evaluate where our problems are. So I wanted to see, can we get him out to that site, to the levee site, in particular, and get his opinion instead of waiting for drone footage?
Well, let's, let's find out from Steve. I mean, I, it sounds like that we'll be getting the drone footage in not too long, right?
Correct. I mean, that's my impression. And perhaps, well, a couple of things. One, we can request, I believe her name's Janet, is sort of the district director, she directs all the crews and schedules the crews. You could request her to come out, but then again, even the 1.8 miles, there's, there's a pretty long stretch. So, you know, she, maybe, I don't, I'm not going to speak for her, maybe she comes out for half a day, but even in half a day, you'd have to prioritize which areas you want her to look at. Because like you said, and I've been out there, it's, you know, it's a creek, it's living, it's, there's a lot of growth going on. So she, first thing she'd say, okay, where do you want me to focus on? So you'd have to give her that direction before she'd even, she's pretty super busy, come out and spend some time. So you'd have to provide that direction to her. I'll just leave it at that.
Well, right. And I mean, you know, Rochelle, you were talking about the area that's already been cleaned. I mean, there's the areas downstream that have not been cleaned in like 30 years. So, which I'm not sure, maybe, maybe that's even too much for the CCC. I don't know. But hopefully, the drone footage will help with that. I, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I think it's okay to wait. That's my opinion. But I'll see what the other trustees think.
I also think we should wait. CCC is probably only going to look at the brush or garbage that's there. But I know that we have a horrible, horrible situation going on with the oversized growth in the middle of the creek. And they won't touch that because it's living. And that's what we actually really need to look at. Because now we have this forest right in the middle of the creek. That's what needs to go, but we just, I just don't know how we can get rid of that.
That's probably on the sediment bank, right?
Exactly. Right in the middle. And that changes the whole bed of the creek. Because now I've noticed in my side, the sediment is completely different and moved. It's, it's a different obstruction than what it naturally was when I first moved.
Well, right, then now we're right back to dealing with
Yeah.
With fish and wildlife.
Yeah.
So you see, it's like this circle that we're going around in. But anyway.
But I just know that CCC, they won't touch anything that's living. And that's what we need to get rid of.
Also, all the sediment there in the center, they push the water to the sides. It's where we have the problem with the eruption, you know?
Yeah.
Because you can see in the bridge, all the debris is in one side, and the water he coming, well, coming, go to 152, the water he running on the right side. And that one is a problem.
What I'm, what I'm hoping, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay.
What I'm hoping that Army, one of the things I'm hoping Army Corps can do for us is, is help us put together a plan. It's like, first you do this, then you do this, then you do this. And some things maybe simultaneously. But that's what I'm hoping that that they can help us do, because we have a lot of problems that we need to attack. And maybe we should be attacking some of all of them simultaneously, but it, it would help to, to know what order to do things in. So, but I do think that that, well, anyway, we've already talked about 5.1, the, the maintenance agreement, that I think that's gonna, we're gonna have to start on that soon. Anyway, okay, so 5.6. Is there any other public comment?
There appears to be no further public comment.
Okay. Any other comment by the trustees? Okay, then let's move on. 5.7. This is review and approve postcard mailer to district owners. So we talked about this at the last meeting. And Rochelle now has provided us with a sample, actually, of what this postcard could be. So each of you, each of the trustees has it. And there was, there were two sizes, but they're actually fairly similar, right, Rochelle, in terms of the other size is not that much bigger. So what are the thoughts of the trustees?
Me looking at this, I'm pretty sure it's going to be overlooked because it's small, and it's, the detail of the pictures, I can't see it. The information in the back, spot on. But it, it just has to really call on them to really notice the impact. I think the larger, yeah.
Also, I was asking Rochelle how much it would cost to do color photos.
Oh, yes. That's, that's what I meant by impact.
Yeah.
It has to be color.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
And if the pictures can be a little bit bigger, I mean, it's kind of hard to see this.
I don't know. I mean, it, maybe we ought to, well, and I guess we'll just have to see what the bigger postcard costs. But we could probably even condense the wording a little bit more so that we get more pictures. We could, we could be, you know, we could cut down the wording. I mean, that's another option.
Yeah, I think this was the basic. Cost is for 50 count, $60, roughly. For the smaller size, it's 40 bucks roughly, for 50 count.
Yeah.
For 60 something members, right? So I just start at the bottom, cheapest, most affordable, and no problem to go back and request for larger options. We'll do that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it is very affordable. And I know there is the mailing cost, too, but it is a postcard, so it's going to be less than a regular letter. Does anybody know how much it costs now to send a postcard?
We don't use the normal.
Yeah, I know, people, who uses postcards? Okay. Well, anyway, if you could come back with, I mean, I, I mean, we'll get this out, we will get it out. And then, and then maybe we can schedule, we can actually reach out to people and try to get a meeting together. But this is a good first step. So thank you, Rochelle. I really appreciate your, your work on this project. Any public comment?
There appears to be no public comment.
Okay. And the trustees, do you have any other comments on the postcard?
No, it's right. They have to be, the pictures have to be in color.
Okay.
And a little bigger.
Okay, great.
It's a good idea.
All right.
On here, it says 56 cents for postage.
Oh, okay. Well, and if we have 60 some odd addresses to send to, you don't have to send it to me. 59. That's not
Because I already know.
That's not, that's not a lot, even in postage. It wouldn't be a lot of money. So, very good. Thank you. Okay, 5.8. Discuss next meeting date. So I went and scheduled a trip at the end of February, and then realized, oh, wait a minute, that's going to conflict with our meeting date. But I, I really can't change it. This is a trip that's already been postponed once. So what do we want to do? Unfortunately, the week before that, the Monday before that, is a holiday. So we can't do that, the 17th. I'm going to be gone from the 19th to the 26th, basically. So we, I mean, what are the options? We either have a special meeting, like the beginning of March and our regular meeting, or we just change our March meeting date, or we just skip the meeting, or you can have it without me. I mean, that's also another possibility. What, what does everyone think?
Probably before you leave in, yes, on Friday.
Well, I'm going to be gone the Friday before that. So I'm going to be gone from the 19th to the 26th. And I can't do the 18th either, actually, because I have a doctor's appointment in San Jose. So
And I'm not available the week before that, which is the 9th through the 14th.
Okay, our next regular meeting would be March 24th. Do we have anything pressing? I mean, we went ahead and approved the, the expenditure of the money for the 7892 project, Lover's Lane project.
Then just skip February and just Then just skip February and just go to the March.
Well, I mean, the only thing, the only thing I can think of would be the postcards. If we wanted to get the postcards out. Or we, or we could move our March meeting. You know, I mean, I know we keep moving the meetings around. We could move the March meeting to earlier in March. And then, and then just continue. Well, I can see already, we're going to have to move the May meeting. But anyway, that's getting ahead of ourselves. So that's another option. We can just meet earlier in March. So that it's not, and then, and then we can decide whether we want to have our regular March meeting or we want to cancel it and just do one in April.
We want to do like the 10th.
We could, we could do March 10th. That's kind of splitting the difference.
So two meetings in March, March 10 and?
Well, no, we would be doing one, one meeting. If we were going to do two meetings in March, we should just, we should do March 3rd. But then we would have, then we would have another meeting just a few weeks later. And I don't know if we need that.
I don't think we do. I'm thinking just one in March.
We skip, skip February.
Or you can do February. You can, you can.
Skip.
Oh, skip. Oh, skip, sorry. Skip February and then meet early March, earlier in March?
Whatever.
I mean, it's not like there's a lot of people who aren't already in this room that would be confused. I mean, who else comes to these meetings now?
I'm thinking either the 3rd or the 10th.
Yeah.
Either of those.
Okay. What, I think either of those would probably be okay. Does anybody have a preference?
Both of those work.
No. Choose the day. The 3rd or the 10th?
Well, let me take public comment then. Let's open it up to public comment.
I prefer it would be good.
Okay.
Now, the 24th, we probably won't. But at least we're a little bit ahead and some behind. Because I think we do have a couple pending things with the Army Corps.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. All right, is, is there a motion then to cancel our regular meeting in February? And have a special meeting, I guess, on, on March 3rd? Oh, I'll just go ahead and do it then. I move that we cancel our regularly scheduled meeting on February 24th and have a special meeting on March 3rd. Is there a second?
A second?
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, so our next meeting will be March 3rd. Okay, the only other thing is future agenda items. Does anybody have any ideas for future agenda items for March 3rd? Other than the regular things?
I think it's just the regular things.
Things that ongoing.
Yeah, I think it's just regular.
How about public comment?
There appears to be no.
It's up too soon.
Marcel Burley, San Benito County. I like the idea of that card. It's very analog and maybe we should also go digital. We have a lot of email addresses from the neighbors. And we can send an email out or and say, hey, we have a mailing list if you want to join. Doesn't have to be something fancy. We can also just remind a day or two before, hey, we have a meeting. Please come and attend. And we can also do coffee or a bagel or something. I would have no issue providing that, just to kind of get folks in.
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay, so you'd like us to discuss other outreach?
The mailer is nice, but again, we didn't even know what the postage is. It's kind of like, I'm not getting really mail other than bills.
Yeah.
And here and there, I get a card, but I get a lot of email and people change to email, so we should address that and maybe have an option to opt in for a mailing list, whatever. It doesn't have to be anything fancy. But just a reminder for me.
Yeah, we've actually, we actually did that, but we can talk about it. We can talk about our experience with that, with the digital outreach. Okay, so more on outreach. Okay.
Or different avenues.
Different outreach. Okay. Thank you. All right, is there any other public comment?
There appears to be no further public comment.
All right. Then the only thing left is to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the January 27th meeting of the Pacheco Stormwater District?
I motion we adjourn today's meeting of the 27th of January.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned. We will see you all March 3rd. Thank you.